Welcome to our April eighth board meeting. Please rise for the pledge.
Seducants to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here tonight. We're happy it's not raining.
We've got a lot of rain around.
A little bit of April showers. Okay, so we're gonna start with our minutes from our March twenty fifth board meeting. Does anyone have any questions? Have a motion? If you're moved by red, seconded by Sue, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, so Carrie. All right, we have a couple of announcements. The first announcement is personal voter registration for May twentieth, the annual budget vote and election. In order to vote, you must be registered with the Rockland County Board of Elections or the Nanyouette School District. For any community resident not registered with the Rockland County Board of Elections, we offer in-person registration from nine AM to four PM in the administrative offices through May fifteenth. Photo ID and proof of residence are required. You can call eight four five six two seven nine two oh two for an appointment. Residents can also register online at the New York State DMV website or with the Rockland County Board of Elections. To qualify as a voter, you must be a citizen of the United States, at least eighteen years old, and a resident of the school district for at least thirty days prior to May twentieth. Second announcement is about absentee and early voting for May twentieth. Applications for absentee and early mail ballots may be requested by emailing the district clerk at alupo@nanewettesd.org or in writing to one oh one Church Street, Nanyouette, New York one oh nine five four. Absentee and early voting mail ballots will be available April twenty fifth. Completed absentee and early voting mail ballots must be received in the district office in person or by US Mail no later than five PM on May twentieth. And then the last announcement for tonight is the board member terms of office for the May twentieth annual budget vote and election. There will be two open seats for the school board, for the Board of Ed on the May ballot. We have, both seats are expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, currently held by Sue Frisch and Jeff Geis. Those two seats are for three-year terms and they go from July first of twenty twenty five to June thirtieth of twenty twenty eight. And as we mentioned before, Jeff Geis is not seeking reelection, so his seat will be vacated. Petition packets to run for a seat on the Board of Education are available in the office of the district clerk located in the high school administrative offices. Petitions are due in the office of the district clerk by five PM on Monday, April twenty first. Twenty-five signatures of qualified voters in the district are required. So if anyone is interested in joining us on the school board, please pick up a petition. All right, anyone have any questions? Anything about the announcements? All right, correspondence? I don't have any current correspondence on here. We have committee reports, we've had some committee meetings, the finance committee.
Oh, hang on a second, I'm sorry.
You have an update for us, Steph?
I'm writing down all the dates here. Tomorrow's the most seats that I'm going.
Yes, yes, we'll talk about that too.
It's asking me to reset my password.
Oh, um, hold on, I can probably pull them up. Do you want to look too?
Do you want these?
I haven't.
Oh, sure, yeah. Okay, so we talked about the, um, yeah.
The committee meetings. You've got them, so.
I just can't find it here. Um, we talked about the building condition survey. Uh, so Matt and his team went through the entire building, found a lot of things that we were looking at with the original bond, in addition to some more things, uh, given it's been several years, and found about fifty-eight million dollars worth of work. They prioritized that into different categories. Category one being things that are must-do, category two, and then three. So, uh, the first category, about six million dollars worth of work that, um, you know, was things that, you know, are more pressing than others. And then categories two and three were basically projects and ideas, some of it in category three that was more conceptual. Um, the survey itself was particularly difficult to read because the way, the way they broke it apart, they did it by systems and not by projects, which was a little bit difficult. So they're gonna go back to the drawing board and give us a more user-friendly version of that so we can take a look at costs to redo a specific project as opposed to the cost of all the electricity in one building and all the, uh, different systems. And we talked about, um, the, uh, library, which we're gonna hear about tonight, um, so I won't go too much into that. And we also talked about the outdoor playground at Miller. I know you wanted to say a few things about that. Um, so what the plan was so far was to just take it down because it is not only an eyesore, but children can't play on it. It's been blocked off for a month at this point. So get it down and for right now, uh, plant some grass and let it be. Um, I know Sue and I had talked earlier today about, you know, what else it could be, um, and she had come up with some really great ideas as she always does, um, and, yeah.
Um, you know, I wasn't planning on talking about this tonight, but I, um, Stephanie and I, Stephanie and I had talked about, um, you know, I have said so many times that I love the structure of the committees, right, and how it has been so efficient in getting worked on and in depth rather than everybody getting to know every single detail and then reporting back. Um, but I know that in some, at some times in the committees that I'm on, I have raised questions about should the whole board be in on this particular thing? And so when I saw this, I said, you know, the Miller playground, just, um, making it grass. First of all, I wasn't even sure which playground we were talking about. Um, and then maybe putting a turf blanket over it or whatever. Um, I had hoped that that would be a conversation for the whole board, uh, thinking that that's something that is very important for, for Miller School, uh, to, um, have that as a bigger conversation, not just the finances of it, but the importance of it. That's what I was talking to Stephanie, to Stephanie about. So, uh, and, you know, that has come up, uh, you know, we talked about even in the innovation grants, um, how would they, how would we as a committee make recommendations so the whole board could decide? So just as we're going through these, these committees, like just fine tuning some things, uh, so that was the conversation that Stephanie is alluding to, um, you know, putting in a, a play area for them. I'm all about kids having open space to play. But at Miller, we have a huge grassy area behind, behind Miller. Um, so, so I don't know, it's just something that I think should be discussed.
So we're just planting the grass now, though. We're taking down the dangerous and then planting grass until we, we find a solution.
What that's gonna say. Right. Taking it, taking it down.
Right, right.
Well, the grass is fine, but when you start talking about putting turf over it, that seems like a more expensive one.
Permanent.
Permanent.
I don't think it's a grass turf.
It was turf. I, I think it was in here and, uh, it was in here and up.
It said, it said a blanket turf, um, from what I understand.
Oh, that.
It was a white, white clay.
No, it wasn't. Sun.
Oh, okay.
I think the thought was sun.
Rather than not seed, yeah.
So I think there was a thought of my good sun.
Yeah.
I saw, I saw it, I remember. Yeah, where it was turf, so that was, you know, we don't, we don't think.
I don't think it was turf like, like, like the field, so.
Okay.
I think it's a blanket, so the grass will grow.
Yes.
Right, right.
Understood.
That's what I believe, but that's what my reflection is from meeting, but.
I think that's.
Yes, that type of.
Thank you for the clarification.
But to your, to your point, Sue, I think we're finding our way on that, right? Like, I think the committee structure is relatively new, I think.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we've talked about this, like, ways that we can, like, report back to the board before we're here making the report is not, like, just a surprise for people.
Right.
I know the minutes come out, but that doesn't always give the color that you need.
Well, especially like in something like this. And I think that the rest of the board just needs to say, wait, I didn't, I need more clarification about that and, you know, and that's fine too. But honestly, I think the committee is structured.
Are you, are you recommending a playground committee now?
No, I am not, and I'm not recommending that I be on it either.
You just volunteered to.
Just.
No, I would, I think.
So that's all that.
Well, the ad hoc committee will be available.
Pretty soon.
After we finish our students, uh.
Pretty soon, next year.
That's, that's true.
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh, all right.
But, you know, the thought of also, some of the things that she had mentioned was other ideas besides playgrounds that kids can go out to because now that we're having outdoor space developed at Hyview, outdoor space that have been developed here, you know, the thought is, can we develop that space to be something more innovative?
A learning space.
A learning space at Miller. Um, you know, obviously, you know, in, in working with the Hyview team now on that beautiful area that we're developing, that's, I think, how that came probably to mind of, you know, could we do something a little bit different with the space besides just grass? So maybe we can start looking into something like that.
Miller teachers, this is the playground right outside the kindergarten wing? That, where is it?
Second grade now.
Second grade.
It is at the second grade wing, so it, it isn't what you thought it was.
The one that's worked off right now, like you can't, you can't.
Yeah, we're going around.
Um, sorry, I haven't been walking around Miller School anymore.
Yeah.
The one outside to the left, if you come out the first grade wing, the one to the far left, um, to the left is lockdown.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Um, okay, so then the last thing that we talked about was the reserve. So in talking about developing the building condition survey, looking at that, and now creating a reserved or a savings account that we can then start saving money for some of these projects in addition to the money that's coming off of, um, bonds that have, you know, been paid. So putting that together, we came up with, you know, this time coming up with our reserve account, which has been discussed and already, you know, brought forward. So, um, it was really great, uh, talking about different things that we can do, looking at the projects, phases, you know, the different types of projects and sort of the importance of those projects and, um, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do you want to add anything?
No, I think, I, I think the discussion is really good. It's foundational, right? It's, it's been really, I think, basic at this point, but ways to plan and I think be responsible with the community's money, um, uh, and have an eye on the future. I think that's just been like the basic concept that we've done. We don't, we're trying not to spend indiscriminately, but, um, be careful with the way that money is spent and to keep the district in a really good place. Not only now, but in the future, and to spend the money in, in good places first. So I think that's, that's the discussion, that's the point behind the reserve fund. Um, so we don't deplete our money, um, especially now with the way costs are going up, 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 um, just a way to insulate the district. I think that's been the, the general discussions are ways to insulate the district from rising costs, um, and to manage, you know, have taxes be predictable over time, so. But that's just the general stuff.
Yeah.
Think I'll go.
Sounds good. Okay. Well, thank you. I know to be continued. We will have a lot of discussions. There's a lot of things to discuss going forward. Okay, um, health and safety committee.
Yeah, um, Sue and I sit on the health and safety committee. Um, I like to report all the time right up front, ninety-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-six hours, no incidents. No, all safety hazard, no incidents. Okay, uh, phase three of our construction project is ninety-nine percent complete at this point. On phase four, all schools, the blue light lockdown system is ninety-nine percent complete. We're still waiting for the integration with the IT and it, we've been waiting now a number of months, so we're still.
Is that tricky to?
Yeah, it's just taking a very long time to have that happen.
Well, the last, the last thing was with, um, how the police department was going to be notified. That, that was what was holding up.
Yeah.
Holding up, so.
Okay. So thank you for meeting with them and trying to figure, figure this out. It doesn't sound like it should be that complicated, but it is apparently, so.
Yeah. I know.
Agreed.
Um, in the Nanyouette High School, under phase four, uh, fifty percent complete, mostly air conditioning and heating piece of it. The door replacements is only five percent complete and the glass replacement, five percent complete. At Bar, the firewall upgrades is seventy percent complete. Anticipated to be completed by May twenty twenty five, so that's good. So, uh, the kitchen ceiling renovation is ninety-five percent complete. The, and Bar, also the bathroom renovations is ten percent complete, the door replacements, five percent complete, HVAC upgrades, five percent complete. Under five, phase five, the Hive in Hyview, uh, I will be done over the, the spring break and they're, they're re-roofing and doing exterior masonry over the spring break, which means they'll be finished soon. In Miller, the classroom AC is ten percent complete. At the OEC, they're putting in new exterior steps and ramp to the building and new boiler. And they are doing road repair and that dip in the back, if you walk the trail at all, you'll see there's one part of it that goes down and comes up. They're also gonna handle that shortly. Buildings and grounds, uh, electrical upgrades, new siding, roof, roof repairs, office renovation and heating and cooling upgrades will be starting. Boilers in the high school, so you all know about the boilers in the high school. The brand-new boilers that are gonna be coming in are the primary, they'll be the primary ones. The backup boilers now will be the ones that they're gonna repair and replace and do whatever they have to do to get it revamped. Uh, the security upgrades that they're doing right now is cameras. Uh, the presentation to the board will be a presentation on security of the board. I'm not sure if it's scheduled yet, but.
We talked about maybe doing that in September, uh, just since the, um, Health and Safety Community Committee had met. Uh, there had been a lot of new things that have come up, so we thought maybe in September or October, we would present the new things in safety that we have included in the district.
So that makes sense, 'cause we blew the plans that, uh, October.
We have spoken to Matt again, we did talk to Mario, but by the time that comes around, just as an update.
Makes sense.
Hopefully the blue lights will be done by then.
Oh, and please.
Just a thought, just a thought. And, and the last item on our, on the list that we talked about is the paving, to fix it at the high school in Bar and to repaint the stripes. You can notice all the stripes that are starting to fade. Um, they said it has to be done like every three years if you wanna keep it, so that people know where to cross and whatever, whatever. And that's my report. Sue, you want to have anything?
No, I think that's it. Thank you, Evan.
Thank you. And the last committee report is the policy.
The policy committee, yes, we, um, met the beginning of the week.
Which today?
It's just yesterday.
Was it just yesterday?
A week just came in.
It feels like a week ago.
It's been a long week already.
Uh, and we, we discussed the ex officio student member of the board, which, uh, NISBA has mandated that we have, but it's also been something that we've been looking into, especially, um, one of Sue's initiatives to, to get a, a student on the board and have a say. So, um, we've discussed, um, what NISBA had, had offered, uh, for the policy and we're just looking, um, at what our expectations are for the student, um, as far as attendance and, and, um, other portions of a meeting, which portions that they'll be, um, attending and how we are going to appoint them or but the, the, uh, ad hoc committee has already done such a great job and also the students in, in putting in their input of how they would like to represent themselves or have themselves represented and also to participate. So we haven't finished the whole policy. I believe that we will have that finished for the next meeting and that will be our first reading, so.
Yes, and the, and the students also went over the policy and gave their input, which was great.
Right.
Um, and, you know, just for the board's point of view, some of the questions that came up, for example, is do we require or how do we handle the summer meetings? There are only two in the summer, but with knowing how families go away or kids might be working or whatever, so there's some conversation about that, but we want them to know that this is a time commitment also. Um, so we're, we're dealing a little bit with that wording. Um, Lisa did a great job in, in drafting all that information, so I think the policy is pretty, pretty straightforward and, uh, and good so far. We're, we're working on it.
Well, and you can always zoom in in the summer.
Yeah, yes, and that was also discussed.
An opposition, yeah.
Um, but, you know, the February, the February.
Reorganization.
The reorganization.
We need to have ours, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So we have our next meeting this Thursday.
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
That's not tomorrow, which is what I was going to say, voice of confusion. This Thursday, so we have another meeting with the students and they have been, I know this is not on the agenda, but they have been interviewing, um, the prospective candidates.
Yeah.
So I'm very anxious to hear about how that, how that worked out.
We should be very proud of our kids. These four kids are amazing.
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 Mr. Mahoney, do you have a sense of how all that went, the interviewing and?
Uh, it went very well, thanks to Peggy Panker, um, who's helped out in her classroom, um, and she, she helped facilitate the entire situation. Two students ended up doing the entire interview process. Um, what I will say that was most impressive is we had the two assemblies prior to the interview process. Um, these four individuals, the way that they planned, conducted themselves, the questions from our junior and senior class were exceptional.
Wow.
And it was because of the information they provided by these students. It was just so well done. I, I can't say enough about these four individuals. The show. We're very fortunate to have great kids here in the high school, thanks to Miller and all the other schools for being up here.
They don't get here in the back.
And it was just very impressive, but it's, it seems to be going very well, but I've been trying to, as you can tell, uh, you know, Dr. Brady speaks about this all the time. It's giving them the opportunity to own the show and, and we're here to support them, so.
Oh. A hundred percent. They did a hundred percent of the work. We kept saying, is there any help you need? Do you need anything? Here's our email address.
They were like, no, we don't.
I was like, no, we got you.
They, they did a fantastic presentation. How, how many students, do you know how many students, uh, were interested in the interview?
It was over twenty, actually.
It was over twenty.
Wow, okay. So I was wondering what it ended up being, 'cause they certainly had a list.
Yeah. I heard it was last.
Okay, good. That's a nice amount.
And then, that also, you know, remember those, from those students, we might be picking students to help represent on some of these committees.
Committees, yeah.
So it's not just the students that are sitting here on board as representatives.
Do we need another policy for that?
For that to be on committees, yes.
Committee policy.
Lynn? Okay. We're looking forward to hearing.
Thank you. Yeah, it's exciting.
I am excited about it. That's great. All right. Wonderful, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Lynn, no, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, great. All right, superintendents report. Dr. Brady's turn.
Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, so lots going on. As, as you know, we're gonna start with Hyview this evening, so, um, our third grade students , uh, traveled to Bar Middle School to work with our fifth grade students about the importance of caring for, um, uh, and saving our water and the, our water sources, and our fifth grade students shared their expertise, uh, of the water cycle, uh, with our third grade scientists at Hyview. So we love those interbuilding collaborations where students are really sharing their knowledge with one another and, um, so that, um, was an exciting opportunity for both the third graders and the fifth graders. Um, on Friday, April eleventh, so that's this Friday coming up, our fourth grade students will be working with representatives from the Orange Bank and Trust Company to discuss financial literacy, um, and the importance of saving money. Um, and this is directly aligned with the competencies of the portrait of a graduate. So we're starting really young and making sure we're sending that message all the time about how things are linked and aligned. Um, and I think most of us wish somebody would have talked to us in fourth grade about financial literacy. We might not be in the boat we're in right now. Um, and our fourth grade students will also be taking the, um, ELA, New York State ELA test tomorrow, uh, on, uh, Wednesday, April twenty-third and Thursday, April twenty-fourth. Um, and that testing will be computer-based supposedly this year. Um, there've been some glitches, as you know, so hopefully we'll have those worked out by next week. Michelle, did we get all that testing in today? Chris, Michelle? Yeah, so just so you know, 'cause you'll probably hear that, like, in the community about the, uh, computer-based testing today going haywire. But one of the, um, because we start so early at Bar, as you know, we do, we actually tested most of the kids before things went haywire, so, um, we were lucky actually to get that testing, uh, done successfully today.
So what did haywire?
At the state, not us, um, at the state. Yeah, not, not, was not a, a Nanyouette issue. It was a state. I don't know, Chris, do you know what happened up there?
Oh, at the state. Oh.
They talked about the load, too many districts are, you know, testing too early tonight. So they, they said they just admitted.
Yep.
Yeah, now they should be able to accommodate it. So we'll see tomorrow.
I'm sure my granddaughter, Rep. Somers, volunteered not to take it. It's her birthday today, so.
So we'll see. Um, yeah, it was not a Nanyouette issue, it was a bigger issue. Uh, on the athletic front, um, I just wanted to mention that the Nanyouette Hall of Fame induction dinner was this past Saturday. Um, our, the inductees were the nineteen sixty-eight tennis team, the nineteen seventy-four, when I graduated from high school, uh, basketball team. Kathleen Rogan was honored, Taylor Redman, Mark Houts and John Winston, uh, for their athletic achievements, and I know you'll love to hear this. Lester Bacon, uh, one of our longtime drivers, received the Distinguished Service Award, so congratulations to all of them, especially to Lester. Um, that's really well deserved. Um, at Bar, uh, on April first and second, so just, um, this, you know, past museums with Marissa, visited, uh, sixth graders at Bar with a focus on ancient Rome, um, and that's a Metropolitan Museum of Art program that's run by one of the few Egyptologists in the country. Um, it provided an engaging, different perspective, uh, interactive bringing to life like a period of history, which is, um, you know, ancient for all of us, especially for our students. Uh, the annual recess March Madness tournament run by Larry Arena, uh, took place last week and the and the winning homerooms were Mrs. Shucker, uh, Mr. Erickson, Dr. Restiano and Mr. Silver. So congratulations to all those students and their athletic intermurals. Uh, Bar Middle School is also taking the New York State ELA assessments um, this week. Uh, but just a reminder that all Chromebooks need to be fully charged for school every day, not just these days. Uh, and marking period three begins on April eleventh. Um, and so we encourage all students and parents to finish the year strong and make some goals for the fourth, um, for the fourth marking period and that begins right after spring break. So school year's going by pretty quickly. Uh, I wanted to just talk a little bit about Girls Rock Steam, which was um, held on Saturday, March twenty-ninth. Um, another amazing um, day. Eighty-six girls were registered and attended from seven different districts in the area. So it's a really big um, event that's um, uh, organized by Heather. The girls selected three uh, hands-on STEAM workshops out of a choice of twelve that they could pick from. Um, and they included dissecting a squid, coding, a TI Rover, learning chemistry, beyond uh, making, uh, behind making ice cream, uh, forensics and, and more. Those were facilitated by New York State Master Teachers, who are local educators, um, including volunteers from Violia, the New York Sea Grant, Med Learn, staff and our Nanyuette School District and from, uh, from Pearl River as well, School District. Uh, our Nanyuette alumna, alumna Isabel Gallegos, uh, assisted in facilitating a workshop. And the keynote speaker was Abby Noble, um, and she's been, I think she was here last year as well. She graduated in twenty-twenty. Um, and she went on to graduate with a degree in biometrics, uh, biomedical engineering and computer science. Uh, she shared the story of how she um, got into the STEAM field and, and her career path to getting there. Um, and the girls were very motivated. I, I saw her last year. She's terrific. Um, really talking to the girls about these STEAM careers and, and how, with the pathway that she took. This year, uh, they introduced a community connection sno- showcase as part of the day uh, where the girls could attend with their families. And um, I just wanted, like, all of the people that were here. Uh, so after the workshops and the keynotes, um, the, uh, every, the girls and their families were invited um, to walk through kind of like a vendor fair, but we had representatives from Pfizer, Rockland Green, Orange and Rockland, uh, Violia, Med Learn, WSP Colliers, McLaurin, Rockland Teacher Center Institute, the Workforce Development, uh, Board of Rockland County was here, Clarkstown Police Department was here. Uh, and then our High School Robotics Club was also there. So there were tables set up and so there was a, a really kind of fun activity even after the other fun activities of the day. So, and I just want to say, I wrote this, big shout out to Heather Shucker. That's an enormous amount of, of um, coordination. I know she gets a lot of help and so I don't have everybody's name here, but um, it's an enormous opportunity for not just our girls, but girls in the region uh, to really kind of come together and um, um, interact with uh, people that are really having girls focus on science and technology. So girl power, let's go. Um, and then last but not least, our high school, uh, we have our National Honor Society induction this Thursday. Um, that's seven thirty, Mike, or seven?
Uh, I think it's at six o'clock.
Six o'clock, there we go. We have time to log on to my class afterwards. Very good. Um, so we'll, we'll, that will be for Thursday.
Seven thirty.
I have to be there at six, so I don't know.
Okay. What does it say? Is it seven thirty? I can't really remember what it's seven thirty. Seven thirty, all right, so much for my class.
But I'm here at six if anybody wants to.
All right. All right, we'll, we'll go through a mock induction with Mike just so we feel included in things. Uh, end of the marking period again is Friday, April eleventh. Um, we, the high school will host parent orientation for incoming ninth grade students on March twenty-fourth at six o'clock.
That's at six o'clock.
That is. Uh, and then just please continue to the, to visit the digital backpack, parents, for all of that information. So that's it for me. Lots going on. Um, we're into the hump stretch, which is hard to believe, but we are.
Even more going on.
Yes, correct.
As we move forward.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next is public forum. I'm going to read a statement before we take any statements from the public. Public forum is an opportunity for the public to make statements to the Board of Education. Statements are not made to other members of the public. The Board does not routinely comment on personnel issues in public. It is the Board's strong recommendation that any criticisms or compliments concerning personnel be made in writing and not presented at the open forum. Comments made in writing allow the Board to review the comments in detail and to ask the superintendent to review the comments and to take action if necessary. Would anyone like to address the board? Okay, there'll be another one at the end if anyone has anything to add. All right, next is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions about the consent agenda? Okay, can I have a motion, please? It moved by Lynn, seconded by Anne. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried. Certified personnel.
Resolved that Christine Schiff, one point oh teaching assistant in the Nanyuette School District, be granted an extended leave of absence from four thirty twenty-five through approximately five twenty-three twenty-five.
Okay, can I have a motion, please? Moved by Sue, seconded by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried.
Resolved that Christine Schiff be appointed position one point oh regular substitute teacher in the Nanyuette School District from four thirty twenty-five through approximately five twenty-three twenty-five.
Okay, can I have a motion? Moved by Stephanie, seconded by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Resolved that the resignation of Danielle Porco, teacher in the Nanyuette School District, be accepted effective six thirty two thousand twenty-five.
Can I have a motion? Moved by Anne, seconded by Stephanie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried. All right, thank you. Meredith? Okay, next is the property tax report card.
Be resolved that upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools, the attached information will be submitted to the New York State Education Department via the web so that the SED can create and publish a version of the Nanyuette School District's property tax report card.
Okay, can I have a motion? It moved by Ray, seconded by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried. Thank you, Mario. Right, next, let's have our budget appropriations.
Be resolved that upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools, the Nanyuette Board of Education authorizes the twenty twenty-five twenty-six school year budget in the amount of ninety-three million eight hundred sixty-six thousand three hundred and seven dollars to be presented to the voters for approval on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Can I have a motion, please? Moved by Stephanie, seconded by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried. Thank you. All right, approval took place, a referendum on the May twentieth annual meeting.
And, and this follows what Stephanie was saying and, and what Ray was uh, reiterating about starting a reserve fund, a capital reserve fund. So this would go on the ballot to start that reserve fund, so I'll read it. Be resolved that the Board of Education in the Nanyuette Union Free School District hereby submits the following proposition to be included on the ballot of the annual meeting and election to be held on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Quote, shall the Board of Education of the Nanyuette Union Free School District be authorized to establish a capital reserve fund for the purpose of appropriating sufficient funds necessary to construct and renovations to reconstruction of and or additions to its facilities as identified from time to time, including but not limited to those recommended in its five-year capital uh, facilities plan and including HVAC maintenance, elevator replacements, bathroom renovations, oil tank replacements, storage facilities, health and safety improvements, drainage, lighting, asbestos remediation, plumbing, energy efficiency improvements, furnishings, general improvements, site work, equipment, machinery, apparatus purchases and incidental improvements and expenses. In connection therewith, the ultimate amount not to exceed twenty million dollars, not including interest if any, over a probable term of fifteen years, and further stating that such amount shall be raised from the unappropriated and unassigned fund balance in excess of the amount prescribed by law. And be it further resolved that District Kirk shall be authorized to include the language of such capital fund, reserve fund proposition in the legal notice of the annual meeting, budget vote and election.
Okay, can I have a motion, please? Moved by Anne, seconded by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried. Thank you. All right, budget transfers, continuation, Mario.
There are three of them. I'll read them all at once and if you'd like to vote together unless you want to take one or two out of there. Be resolved that the Nanyuette Board of Education approves the attached authorization for budget transfer dated April eighth, two thousand twenty-five in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars for the general fund. And be it resolved that the Nanyuette Board of Education approves the attached authorization for budget transfer dated April eighth, two thousand twenty-five in the amount of forty thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars in, for the general fund. And be it resolved that the Nanyuette Board of Education approves the attached authorization for budget transfer dated April eighth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars for the capital fund.
Okay, can I have a motion, please? Moved by Jeff and seconded by Ray. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried. All right, now we're on to policies where we're going to waive the second reading and approve policy forty-three twenty-one point four, which is the independent educational evaluations, which we did speak about like the last meeting. Does anyone have any further questions or anything about that? Okay, can I have a motion, please, to accept the policy? Moved by Sue, seconded by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Great, next, second, uh, waive, second reading and approve policy.
No, you're not waiving. This is the second reading.
Sorry, that is the second reading. Oh, the recommendation. Okay, sorry, and the second one. So that was just to accept the recommendation. Now we're going to... Be resolved the Nanyuette Board of Education approves the attached revised policy. Wait, no, hang on a second. You know what? My computer did not.
Yep, here you go.
Moved, I got it, yep, okay. Um, we're having technical issues tonight everywhere. All right, um, the Nanyuette Board of Education approves the attached revised policy fifty-four twenty, Student Health Services. Can I have a motion, please, to accept that one? Moved by Jeff, seconded by Anne. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and then the last one, here we go, slow computer. All right, second reading and approval of the new policy eighty-one thirteen, Extreme Heat Condition Days. Can I have a motion, please, to accept that? Moved by Sue, seconded by Ray. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All righty, three more policies.
Thank you.
Down, thank you. Thank you for all your work on devising them. All right, so now we're up to our presentations. We have Miller School here today. We're very excited to hear what those little kids are doing, these teachers are doing with them. So thank you for being here.
No, thank you, everyone. Good evening. Um, thank you for having us tonight. You know, we'd like to say thank you to the board of bed, to Dr. Brady and to all the central administrators who provide our ongoing support for everything we strive to do at Miller. This year, our presentations are spotlighting the aspects of a portrait of a graduate with the visual that you see on the left, and I'm sure that you know pretty well by now. Our building goals are stated on the right. And as always, goal one is to improve academic performance of our students. Goal three, strengthen parents and community partnerships, which we need in order to achieve goal one. And goal two is more district-oriented, trying to implement system-wide improvement strategies that focus on achieving the district mission. This goal can be achieved by focusing on the competencies of the portrait of the graduate at our early stages. You have heard us speak and share out on most of these competencies over the years as they're not new skills or ideas. Some of them have previously been called soft skills or the four Cs. I appreciate the graphic in that it identifies the elements as all necessary components for a student to be considered ready to graduate and enter the real world. And while they're depicted separately here for the sake of differentiation, they are interwoven and rarely addressed in isolation in our school. As we spotlight a few of these areas tonight, you will see what I mean by this idea. Here are a few examples of this in action at Miller as we weave together literacy, critical thinkers, effective communicators and cultural competence. Each February, we participate in the countywide Rockland Read-It. This is a day designated for reading, usually held the day before February vacation. It's a competition amongst the schools who participate in the county. This year, Dr. Mayu and Mr. Berry were very intent on winning, and they did. George Miller students and staff read for one hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-two minutes on that Friday. Every teacher, lunch monitor, parent visitor, special area teachers, Mrs. Enright and Robert Custodian, read to students throughout the day. Students were engaged in interactive read-alouds, partner reading and independent reading. On the left, you see a picture of Mr. Pierre, our PE teacher, reading in PE class. When you think of March Madness, you think of basketball, and hopefully you didn't vote for St. John's. In the second grade of Miller, March Madness is all about reading. The picture on the right depicts the brackets of books students choose between. In Mrs. Duffy's class, she invites um, adults in to read two books within the brackets. Students then share their opinion on which book they like better. They need to give valid evidence for their opinion based on the characters, the plot and or the illustrations. They share these opinions with their talking partners and then they share out with the class orally. After the books are read, then they vote on which one is most preferred. This event creates excitement for reading, curiosity. It allows them to hear a variety of adults read aloud. They become effective communicators in sharing a, an articulate opinion. And they're exposed to a rich variety of literature. I'm slightly proud that the book I read won the whole.
Just like, what was the name of it?
Just slightly.
Nobody helps a cactus. The, um, the digital world is ever-present for our learners. In digital literacy classes and libraries special, students are learning to type with keyboarding lessons. Here in a video, we're going to hear from two of our students about this experience. Hey, so we are here with Anna and Amash from second grade and they're going to be talking to us about keyboarding. So I hear you guys are learning how to type. Okay, Anna, tell me why you think it's important to learn how to type?
Because, uh, because if you don't know how to type, then it, it's, you won't know how to communicate with friends or family from all over the world.
Uh, so if I know how to type, I can email them. Amash, why do you think it's important to learn how to type?
So I think it's important because um, in a middle school assignment, you might um, need to assign.
Give five you. Okay, so they do assignments in middle school. Okay, um, how do you go about practicing? How are you practicing, Anna? Uh, okay, Amash?
Um, so we, so we practice on the games and the typing. So like when we finish the levels, we can unlock the game and we can play the game to type.
Okay. And the games are helping you learn the keyboard itself, where the letters are?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. You guys, I appreciate your time. So those responses are unprompted and I'm really happy that they didn't tell us that they're learning to type to take tests next year. Right, wasn't that great? Anna's family lives over, her extended family lives overseas and I thought that was just exactly what.
And does the other boy have a sibling in the middle school?
Uh, I don't know. First, the first take, he talked about his dad and his dad typing reports, so.
He's thinking about a job already, wow. He's not going on live here either. So cute.
Good evening, everyone. So each year, our students at Miller participate in the Great Kindness Challenge. It's a national initiative that um, is designed to inspire and empower our students to engage in different service projects and um, random acts of kindness. So this year, our students participated in two very important projects. The first one was a sock drive, um, where our students collected and donated an impressive one thousand pairs of socks to People to People, which is a local organization that provides essentials to families in need. In addition to the sock drive, they also collected and donated a variety of food items to our very own FRC food pantry. In addition to the sock drive, they also collected and donated a variety of food items to our very own FRC food pantry. These service projects really complement what our students are learning in the classroom. For example, our kindergarteners this year explored the vital roles of community helpers through their community unit. And Mrs. Jovanovic, one of our fabulous kindergarten teachers, decided to expand this unit by integrating literacy. She combined the community helpers unit with mystery readers, inviting different community helpers from our community to come in and read to her class. And she didn't just invite the common community helpers. She had a landscaper, chief, fire chief, YMCA director, former teacher, former principal, and the list goes on and on. So these guests not only shared their love for reading, but they also provided hands-on insight into the positive contributions that they're making in their community. This unique opportunity allowed our students to connect to their real-life role models while fostering an enthusiasm for books. And we're going to hear from, we're going to see this video clip with Mrs. Jovanovic sharing this experience.
Okay, tell us about why you expanded your approach to the community workers unit this year.
I expanded my approach to the, our unit and kindergarten community helpers because I wanted to make it more real for students and help them have that experience where they didn't just hear about it, they get to meet the people from their community and learn about what they do. And I think it helps foster curiosity about different careers. It helps them understand the important roles that people have in their life, their day-to-day life, that they may see, if they don't understand what they do. And also gives the children an opportunity to ask and answer questions, which is something that students need all the way through their career in schools. And just public speaking, learning how to speak and gain confidence.
That's fantastic. So what positive outcomes have you seen from your students' Rockland's new approach?
So by inviting people in to read to my students, I've definitely seen more engagement from the students. I've seen excitement about who the reader's going to be. They love listening to stories and just the idea of how to listen to a story respectfully. And the children prepare questions for every this year reader that comes in, so they ask them questions like, what is your job? What tools do you use? How did you get this job? And what's hard about your job, and what do you like most about it? So the students are learning how to ask and answer questions, are asking them, are receiving the answer, and then, you know, they're getting practice, understanding what a question is, and speaking publicly. And so what types of community workers did you have come this year? We've had many people come in. So everyone that's come in has been someone that I've been connected to at some point in my life, maybe friends with now, just connected with over the last ten years. And we had an interior designer, a guidance counselor, a social worker. We had a retired detective who's now a photographer and does art shows all over the county. We had a CEO of the YMCA, who is in charge of swim lessons and helps to provide swim lessons all over the county, but the importance of going to swim. And one of my favorites was having in our retired principal of Miller on our new school, Dr. Nexisna. And she's now professor at East University, so a value range of people. What a rewarding experience for the kids, thank you so much, thank you.
And Mrs. Jovanovic is actually here. By our students participating in these experiences, we believe that we are cultivating the essential skills from Portrait of a Graduate. Specifically, global citizenship, literate across content areas, cultural competence, social emotional competence, and being an effective communicator. So the United by Reading Initiative is a very special literacy initiative at Miller. Each year, we choose a book, and we read this book with the school community. And we try to choose a book that has a special and powerful message for our students. This year, our students were given the opportunity to choose a book through the district's Kids Vote event. This interactive voting experience allowed our students to have a voice in their reading choices, making this experience even more meaningful. So as a result, our students chose the book, We Are All Wonders by R.J. Palacio. As students engaged with this story, they enhance not only their literacy skills, but they also learn the importance of empathy, compassion, and the beauty of individuality. The story, We're All Wonders, tells a story about a boy named Augie who faces challenges related to his appearance. And students were given the opportunity to reflect on this, and reflect on what makes themselves and others a wonder or unique. And in one second grade class, students went above and beyond by setting up a desk for Augie. And they filled the desk up with positive and encouraging notes addressed to Augie, showcasing their support and understanding. And one heartfelt note read, "Augie, don't feel bad that you weren't different, everyone is unique." This simple yet powerful message captures the essence of this student's compassion and empathy. By learning to celebrate differences and supporting one another, we believe that we're building a foundation for a more inclusive and compassionate world. And this experience is aligned to the portrait of a graduate's competencies, specifically cultural competence, literate across content areas, social emotional competency, and effective communication. Thank you. And now, Mrs. Tyken, one of our reading specialists, will share how we are measuring success through our MTSS on the process.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Roberta Tyken, and I've been a reading teacher at the Miller School for over twenty-five years. And it's a pleasure to speak with you about how the Miller School supports our students who are so young, yet we all know such critical and foundational skills occur at this level. Although there have been shifts in approaches and instruction, one constant has been that the teachers and staff know who their students are and where their strengths and difficulties lie. So how does Miller support their students through MTSS and RTI? All students are given a three-time yearly benchmark assessment in both ELA and Math. Our kindergarteners have additional information gathered, including letter names and sounds, as well as blending skills. All these benchmark scores help drive what students need to support them at the tier one, two, and three levels. At the tier one level, classroom instruction in ELA focuses around both decoding and encoding, as well as comprehension and written responses. Math instruction is delivered through the Envisions program. All students take general curriculum assessments in these areas. Classroom teachers determine who needs additional tier one support based on performance on these general assessments. Classroom teachers then offer repeated instruction and practice of specific skills in small groups, and in further, progress monitoring is done. The results of classroom-level assessments also drive which students might be asked to our AIS programs. At the tier two level, the support staff meets to review the benchmark data and determine who will need block time services. This includes our remedial reading and math students, building level speech students, and our English language learning students. In this more intensive setting, where group size is small, further progress monitoring data is kept. This progress monitoring assesses the students based on what intensive instruction has taken place. For example, if a remedial reading group is focused on glued sounds, the progress monitoring may look like reading and writing a glued sound word list. To progress monitor comprehension skills, a DRA progress monitoring passage might be used. And to further assess fluency and timing, AIMS Web progress monitoring subtests are used. And AIMS Web is also used for Math. Information in our tier two student, on our tier two students is captured on RTI Direct, where size, frequency, and duration are noted, as well as their progress monitoring data. Most students who have had an RTI meeting have had both a collection, a data collection form, and an intervention log created on RTI Direct. A student who is not making gains at a tier two level may enter a tier three intervention, where changes in group size, frequency, and duration are noted. Students continue to be progress monitored at this level. And now, we will have Carolyn Christiana, one of our second grade teachers, share some examples of tier one interventions, if anyone has any questions for me.
Hello, Carolyn Christiana, I'm a second grade classroom teacher. I have an example of how assessments drive tier one and classroom instruction. On the left, there's a whole class activity to build on fluency. I first start with a cold read at the beginning of the week, that's a decodable fluency passage that goes along with the skills being taught in foundations that week. So we first start with a cold read at the beginning of the week, and this is a reading of the text to see how many words per minute they have before formal instruction and reading a passage together with the whole class. The next day, we read the text as a class, as those slides on the top show, where I introduce vocabulary words, chunk words that are in the text, practice reading the words left to right, one sound at a time. We are using different syllable types, as you can see there, that we're learning in foundations, so practicing applying that to decode words in the text. We revert back to this text throughout the week, from reading it, echo reading, choral reading, students who partner reads, and I continue to monitor the students' progress with their words per minute in the text. So in the chart, it shows an example of two students and their progress throughout the week. So the first is the cold read, that was, the first student has twenty-six words per minute, and then you can see by the end of the week, has ninety-three words per minute. And then the other student started with thirty-three words, and by the end of the week was at ninety-four words per minute. On the right is an example of intervention. So this is an example of intervention used with students that I observe need some additional support with fluency and authenticity of words. When they're not pulled out with the reading specialist, I pull these students during block time, and we use the Fun Hub, the online website that goes along with the Foundation Program. We use the Fun Hub Fluency Exercises to practice reading sounds, words, nonsense words, phrases, and trick words, learn to date to work on authenticity, in order to improve their reading fluency and speed. I backtrack to sounds with certain students because sounds are the building blocks to words. So on the bottom is a chart showing one of the students that was working on that week, and the improvement throughout the week with that student. So authenticity of sounds in fifteen seconds, that student started at five sounds, and then by the end of the week was at seventeen. And then words in fifteen seconds started at two, and by the end of the week was at ten. So the goal is that using the decodable texts will eventually transfer to regular texts. So I continue to progress monitor by using the decodable texts and foundations passages, and then they're assessed again in the spring with the DRA and these.
Okay, just a quick question. So you're talking about, you do this for children you have identified as at risk, but these are trials?
On the right, the intervention. Not the one on the left, the decodable fluency passages with the whole class, and the intervention is with certain students.
So you progress monitor that way with every student in your class?
The one on the left, the fluency passages.
And how often?
That's not weekly, that's the fluency passage for the week. There's a decodable fluency passage that goes with the foundation skill.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And next up, we're going to have Ms. Stefania Gilio, who is a CT in second grade.
Good evening, my name is Stefania Gilio, I am the second grade consulting teacher at Miller. And as a special education teacher, I focus on supporting students through tier two and three intervention and instruction based on their educational needs at their skill level. My students have a variety of different goals that we work on during my intervention groups. One of the areas that I focus on with my students is building their phonological awareness, specifically through tasks like segmentation, which is the second trick you're going to see. That is when students break a word into individual sounds, as well as substitutions, which is when they change one sound in a word to another to make a new word. My students actively participate and engage in warm-ups before every reading session, and you can see there's some data up there. In the beginning of the year, we had a little bit of struggle on these tasks, but by the middle and current part of the year, my students are actively completing this task with success. So you're going to see a little example of my group showing their ability to substitute sounds, and there's a small video. Is pegged, say pegged, change p to b. Good job. So that's my cute group of second readers. By working on this skill, this helps them grow with their reading skills and their decoding skills. So to be able to hear, manipulate, and apply sounds in spoken language not only helps them to create meaning with words and understand what the word means and how to hear it, but it helps them to apply it in their decoding, their reading, as well as their writing, their encoding. So this is just a great foundational skill that I work on with them. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
So in previous years, we have shared the AIMS Web Triangle data to capture the overall grade level performance. But today, we will focus on a different aspect of our Math data, specifically how our students are performing in the area of fluency. So why fluency? So both reading fluency and mathematical fluency involves the efficient and accurate retrieval of information. Whether it's words or numbers, research shows that fluency impacts the depth of understanding of concepts. Sometimes people think about fluency as getting the right answer quickly, but it's more than that. Mathematical fluency is the ability to efficiently, accurately, and flexibly recall mathematical facts and concepts, and to apply them to more complex mathematical skills or to solve problems. When students are not fluent mathematicians, they struggle with basic calculations, building conceptual understanding, and applying problem-solving strategies. And they can also experience math anxiety. So for today, we will present data that focuses on our fluency measures within each grade level. We'll also identify some trends, specifically how our students are on, how many of our students are on track. Those are the, in the top seventy-five percent or above. How many of our students are in need of support, which are the bottom twenty-five percent? If our students are moving out across benchmark periods, and to give you a bigger picture, we'd like to share how our Miller students are performing compared to their peers nationally. So this, the data presented compares the performance of a group of students, a group of students across two assessments. One is taken in the fall and in the winter, these are AIMS Web assessments. The darker bars are the, describe our Miller students and their performance. The lighter bars are describing the national norms. So for kindergarten, we look at number naming fluency, which is a subtest in AIMS Web. It measures the ability for students to quickly and accurately identify and name numbers. It's a foundational skill for later math learning, as it helps to develop more number sense and the ability to perform calculations. So the data shows that the lowest tier, the one to ten percentile, improved from fall to winter. There was, if you see, there was a drop from fifteen point one percent to ten point six percent. There was also a four percentage point increase in the twenty-six to seventy-four percentile, showing growth in the average range. Our fall data shows that Miller students performing generally the same as the national norms. However, winter data does suggest that we lag a little behind. We'll talk more about that in a second. First grade, we looked at math fact fluency, which measures the ability to quickly and accurately recall basic facts. The data shows that students scoring in The data shows that students scoring in the 26 to 99 percentile grew from 33.6% in the fall to 77.5% in the winter. This is significant growth in middle to high performance bands. The top 10% nearly tripled. And you'll see that in the 90 to 99 percentile. In the fall, it was 2.9, winter 6.3%. So we have more high achievers in the winter. Combine the 75th and to 99 percentile improved by 10.4 percentage points, showing there's more of an increase in mastery. And the 1 to 25th percentile group dropped from 64.66.4% to 22.5%. This is a dramatic 43.9 percentage point decrease, which shows that there is a reduction in low performing students. Our data shows that there is strong academic growth across the board. Fewer students are struggling and many more are performing at or above average levels. The fall data also suggests that we are, we work slightly below the national norms in the fall. However, the winter data displays growth above the national average, which is greatness. In the second grade, we looked at the mental computation fluency, which measures the ability to perform mathematical calculations quickly, accurately, and flexibly. So our data shows that students in the 90 to 90th percentile more than tripled. They went from 14.2% to 46.7%. The 26 to 74th percentile dropped 14.1%, but that's likely because those students moved up to higher tiers, to the higher tier. Low ranges, the 1 to 25% shrunk substantially, showing that there was a clear reduction in our struggling students. If you look at the 1 to 10th percentile, it went down 1.6%. And our 11 to 25th percentile went down 5.6%. And when we compare our students' performance to the national norms, both fall and winter data shows that Miller students perform stronger than the national norms.
Any questions about this data?
Got one.
Yes.
Do you have the opportunity to look at how students do in the fall and the winter and see which kids tracked, let's say, up or stay the same in the percentile?
We do, we have that data. We do. We can, we actually have several different reports from the AIMS Web tools that we can disaggregate that data.
Good.
Okay, so we do. So Mrs. Brifin will now speak to how we are supporting our students, our struggling students in these areas.
So we wanted to show you again back to MTSS and RTI in terms of how using the similar math data, our remedial math students are doing. So this slide displays data of a group of Tier Two remedial math students and the progress monitoring conducted on them. It is with the same AIMS Web test and mental computation fluency that you see here. So the data shows that in the fall, we had 10 students between the first and the 25th percentile, so well below average. And then with remediation, in the winter, after being tested, there were two students in that category. And you see the average category of 26 to 74% move up from four students to 11 students. So this group is doing pretty well. The remedial math teacher conducts this progress monitoring every four weeks to really check in and then be able to adjust her instruction for the group accordingly. Another area, so if we're looking at Tier One classroom data, this is another point of data that classroom teachers can use to analyze fluency growth within their students. This is called Reflex Math. It's one of our supplemental online programs that second grade and above use. The data you see in the top row displays one second grade individual class data. And then the second row is the entire grade level. So what you see in the first circle, let's go to the grade two fluency data at the bottom. You see that circle in red. That is the data that's taken in September when the students do the level set assessment, okay? And then in the winter, you see the second circle in the bottom. That is the fluency data in the winter. The reason the data looks, the level set, let me explain. The level set is administered based on the end of year second grade standard for addition and subtraction math fact fluency, which they need to be fluent to 20, okay? When they leave first grade, the expectation of the standard is that they are adding and subtracting to 10. So at the beginning of the year, you see the 13.6 on the level set. And then in the winter, you see 80%. So they're gaining those facts very rapidly through this additional program. They use this program, once the level's set, they take the level set. The program customizes each student's start off point and where they're supposed to practice. And then the teacher can check in on your data. They use this program during block time and spend it home at times, if they take their laptops home, and check in that it's matching up with the assessments that they're giving within the classroom, the common assessments. So it's another point that we use. Okay, goal three, parents, schools, and community partnerships. Education requires a collective effort, the teacher, the student, the parents, and the community. This is a quote by Robert John Meehan. I think of George Miller, we do this well. As you see on the screen, these are trips to Mario's and the Nanuette Library. These connect to our community's social studies units. Students receive their library cards when they go over to the library in the fall. And as you can see in the bottom left picture, the classroom pizzerias show up at the drama center after their trips to Mario's. Mrs. Mercado and our family resource center work closely with our families to meet the very needs of our diverse communities. They also participate in our family events such as Ruler Family Night, our incoming kindergarten family night, and our reading initiatives. Parents are visiting schools more often now as mystery readers in all grade levels, doing crafts in the classroom, and taking gallery walks to see student work. You've heard us talk about the habitats and hibernation of kindergarten and the musical instrument unit in first grade, where parents come in to see everybody's creations. This year, we invited parents to participate on a parade committee in order to really try to improve the experience of the parade. And based on their suggestions and the changes that we made, I think the event outcome was a happier one for everyone involved. Our parent compact committee has also met regularly and discussed building specific topics such as communication styles and recess ideas. Within our schools, second graders visit the preschoolers to read. Our kindergartners visit preschoolers in June to provide them encouragement as they're to become kindergartners and answer questions that they might have. Second graders are visiting Highview in preparation for their transition to Highview. And seventh graders come to visit each grade level to read and to do a craft. And soon, our Vasa Knights of the Round Table will be visiting to connect with the students and talk about what healthy friendships look like. You know, we're very fortunate to have many people on the same campus to make these connections easier to facilitate. And we're very fortunate that our community cares so deeply about maintaining and deepening these types of relationships.
So the Miller staff is committed to continuously improving our practice. And therefore, our next steps would be to continue learning and building our capacity with the science of reading methodologies so that we can implement them into our daily practices. We would like to explore ways to expand our PBL units and experiential learning. We'll continue refining our MTSS implementation process to make it a more efficient process in maximizing student achievement. Specifically, we'll continue to support teachers with targeted instruction to support students' needs, provide enrichment opportunities for our high achievers, and continue to track the interventions that we have in place over time. Additionally, we'll continue to utilize various progress monitoring tools to evaluate student performance in different areas. And finally, continue to consistently use Ruler and Kelsel to develop social, emotional skills and intelligence.
So as we wrap up, we just, I would really like to thank every single person that works at Miller. You know, regardless of job title, our staff treats our students like they're their own children. The tireless dedication and compassion on our teachers, teaching assistants, and support staff reach to the classrooms is beyond outstanding. And since it's Assistant Principal Recognition Week, you know, I must address my gratitude for Dr. Mayeou. I've learned so much working alongside her, and she's made me a stronger principal and a better human. So, you know, we're just grateful for opportunity to serve in this district. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, comments, questions, Ann?
Yeah, I have a number of comments. First of all, thank you. Thank you, everybody who presented. I love the fact that you started out with the goals and the portrait of the graduate because I know that's what every school is kind of focusing on, as they should be, of course. I am an avid reader, as we all know. And you've spent a great deal of time on literacy, and that is so important. I mean, it's the base of everything, whatever subject you're taking when you get to high school, college, whatever. I mean, you have to be literate. So the read-ins, and I'm also a March Madness freak for the basketball. But anyway, when I heard you had this March Madness thing, I thought, how great is this? Because kids are hearing that everywhere, you know, this whole March mass. And they're actually doing it in their classroom for even a better purpose than playing basketball. And the keyboarding, you know, it's so funny. Somebody asked me not that long ago, you know, we don't teach kids cursive writing anymore. We don't teach kids how to keyboard. We don't, you know? Yes, we do. Yes, we do. We just had two kids talking about how great they were learning how to keyboard because, you know, you can do your papers a heck of a lot faster in high school when you know how to keyboard, you know? The hot and packed methods. So I thought that was terrific as well. And, you know, we talked a lot about a lot of things. But one of the things that struck me was talking about the kindness. Because the world we live in today is not very kind. And we've lost our civility in a lot of cases. So it's really nice to know that our children are learning how important kindness is and how important it is to be civil to each other and kind to each other and have that, you know, go out beyond the classroom. So I was really happy about that. You talked a lot about what we're doing with kids who are, you know, on gray level and kids who start struggling. And it struck me, the one thing I really liked about this, because you're doing it so frequently, I'm getting the feeling that no one's slipping through the cracks. Now, I've been on the board a very long time, and we've had people go fall through the cracks. But you're handling that so that doesn't happen. So I really appreciate that. And I'm sure kids' parents really appreciate that. And the teachers that get them next year is really appreciative of that. So you really seem to have a handle on that, on making sure that kids get what they need sooner rather than later. So it doesn't take, you know, a year before they get into a more, you know, formal instruction because they're, you know, behind. So I was really happy about that. I was happy about the community of readers and how you're bringing the community into your school. And I thought it was really interesting, the kind of community you were talking about. You know, the who the people were that you brought in, and you weren't the normal type. And that's good because kids have to learn that. There's a big world out there. And there are all kinds of people in this big world out there. And we're all kind of working together to do things. I thought it was really well done. And thank you, all of you who presented, and thank you, all of you who came to cheer on those who presented. Because it's always helpful to have your teammates in your school cheer you on. So well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. All right, anyone else want to add anything to that?
Yeah, well, well done, Ann.
Yes, comprehensive of you.
You really summed that up. I took notes this time. Usually I shift it.
You've been watching me. You know, obviously, I taught at Miller School for 25 years and it's still holds such an important part of my heart. And when you talk about the compassion, how that really separates Miller from so many other schools, that everybody is so loving and accepting of these little kids, whether it's, you know, them just hopping off the bus and telling you some very important thing that happened in their life. Everybody seems to have the time for them, which is so, so important. And that starts at the top, but doesn't, but doesn't really work unless it permeates through the entire building. And I know it does. And so that's fabulous. You can't, you can't be a learner unless you feel that love. And I'm sure that they do at Miller School. These programs, United by Reading and Kindness Challenge, are just fabulous. School-wide programs where everybody, all the kids get involved. You know, you talk about reflection and, you know, talk about when they have one common theme in a book and everybody's talking about it. It's, it's just so powerful. I love the kindness challenge, especially talking about curiosity, having kids asking questions. You know, they're so, I know, when I taught, it was, you'd say, okay, we're going to ask this person questions, and they would tell you, I had spaghetti for dinner last night, you know? So that whole, it's not a given that they know how to ask a question, right? So that's so important. But their level of engagement and excitement, kids have to be excited about learning. And that's what you see here. Mrs. Jafan, thank you very much for being part of that video. I could see you couldn't watch yourself on the screen. I know how difficult that is, absolutely. But thank you for, you know, going above and beyond and doing that stuff. You know, as Ann had said about keeping on top of our kids, all our kids, but especially those who are at risk at different levels. And it seems that you have really perfected this with this tier system of in the classroom. And that's really above and beyond the kind of progress monitoring that, well, that may be expected. But from my point of view to progress monitor, every student, every week is, is great. So, you know, really, nobody falls through the cracks. So thank you for your presentation. I think, you know, it's exciting to be a five, six, and seven-year-old at Miller. So you're doing an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone have anything else to add?
Thank you so much for being here. It was great.
Yes, thanks for coming.
We always love seeing those little kids, too. The little video clips are important in there.
Our littlest nights.
Yeah, where it all begins.
It all begins.
Right, then they end up on the board. The students, right?
That's right.
They started, they started with you. So thank you so much for being here.
Okay, we have one more presentation. We have Armand here from KSQ Architects.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
They're not leaving because of you, are they?
Right. Don't take it personally, Armand. Yeah, right?
It may not work.
I think it might.
Okay.
To the right, right arrow?
Oh.
Too far away, maybe.
Got to get closer.
Those are technical difficulties tonight.
I'll do for you, definitely. Yeah, I'll do.
You lost control, huh?
You're out of control there.
Should I?
Yes, of course, begin, yes.
Appreciate this opportunity to come back to the school board and to talk with the community about options that are being developed for studies at the Highview Elementary School. One of the recent, you know, really exciting pieces that the school and district voted in December of '24 to annex 32 Highview to the Highview property campus proper. So that included approximately a half acre of land. And we talked about in September that the land is essentially, so I'm on the left side in the red part of the diagram. The highest elevation is up near the street. in the red part of the diagram, the highest elevation is up near the street, and there's a middle elevation where the home is, and then a lower elevation in the rear garden. So we wanted to develop an outdoor learning commons that really takes advantage of those different elevations and tiers on the left side. Go ahead, Chris. So this is a bird's eye view looking down at the new outdoor learning commons on the left side in green. Again, the plan that was brought to the community is to tear down the existing home to make the land usable for our activities that would be part of the Highview program, and then create the outdoor learning commons. Just a footnote that, you know, costs associated with this project were approved by the community in November, so this is sort of settled business. Go ahead. This is a blow-up. We really are excited about the opportunity to load different types of outdoor curriculum-driven experiences for the students. Starting off at the road, we'd have a lawn that's preserved, and there's a buffer of trees landscaping and fencing, so we really keep the students sort of sheltered in the interior part of the campus and the community along the street line. There's opportunities for a planter garden, as well as outdoor classroom. We have proposed an outdoor amphitheater for outdoor learning or classroom space. There's lawns for flexible programming, and then there's, there's an access to the lower level rasp area that's the older space downstairs in the basement of Highview that was used, or currently being used for storage. Just, I'll just mention that this is a concept diagram. We did have many meetings with administration, Matt Lues with faculty at Highview, but when this project is released to move forward, we're going to come back to the board with a lot more detail and more programming elements that will be baked into the design. So it's kind of manuettish, but it's not fully, fully done yet. We're going to bring it there. So this is a kind of an illustration that shows along the top the different vertical elevations, so the Highview Avenue all the way on the right, then the green, the middle section where the amphitheaters proposed, and the lower level on the backyard, and these are precedent images that show the different, illustrations of the different activities that could happen on the site. So the second, and please interrupt if you'd like to leave a few impressions. The second chapter explores opportunities to reimagine the existing library at Highview. We have two options for this evening. So one of the super important hallmarks of our practice is careful listening, and administration and the school's principal had a couple of engagements with students, and we got really great feedback from the students. So the list on the left are things that students like about the existing space, and then the list on the right, what we'd like to see in these spaces, and what they would, what are expectations for sort of a modern library, or learning commons for third and fourth graders? So I just want to read a few of them. Reading book, a place that I can read on my own, so different scales of spaces, more shelves with books, bean bags, soft seating, like those kind of like really fun spaces that you can move around and curate yourself. Fix the ceilings and the walls, and we know that's been on our list for a while. More comfy chairs, spinning chairs, pillows, 3D printer. These are all really reasonable requests and really thoughtful requests from third and fourth graders, and again, they would, they would want to be baked into any concept that we bring forward. So thank you, Matt and others, for, you know, bringing this content to light. So the existing library at Highview, in the floor plan all the way on the left, it's at the top of the plan. We blew up that end of the wing, and you see that on the lower right in kind of a salmon color. So the existing library, including the support spaces, is a little under 1,400 square feet. The space, it has a couple of issues. So it's a little bit dated, it's got older furniture, older finishes, the ceiling is beyond serviceable, like old-style lighting. We actually had the honor to visit the school today with the school board, and Dr. Brady and Dr. Fox and others, and we walked carefully around all the different spaces, and we looked at both the existing library and other opportunities there. There's a suspended ceiling in the library, and the actual ceiling is much higher, and similar to some of the work we did here at the high school, we think we could bring that high ceiling out. There's water penetration issues into the space, so just some of the older brick areas on the outside, water's getting in. So the library, you know, it's ready to be reconstructed and reimagined, both from a curriculum, furniture, finishes point of view, but just in terms of its infrastructure. These are some inspirational images of other library spaces for this age-appropriate group. We're seeing really, driving forward with earth tones in our practice now, making really fun spaces that the students want to be in. We actually tried to find imagery that relates to the list that Matt brought forward, so you're seeing bean bags, soft chairs, niches where students can study together or on their own, a lot of shelving spaces required in that library area. So none of these individual images are exactly like what we'll do in the design, but they're intended to offer an idea about what it could be like. So moving now to option two, which is an idea that really came from the adding of the 32 Highview land, is how could we make a new library that's much closer to the outdoor learning commons that's being proposed? So similar to the work that we did here at the high school, the indoor global learning commons, and it spills out to the outdoor commons. And that was, that was sort of the inspiration for this approach. So in the basement of the southern, the bottom of the plan, is the, what we call the old rasp space, it's an upper camp program that was, housed in that space, and today is really storage space. So the idea is to repurpose that space, or found space, we say in the industry, and add it to the instructional inventory of Highview. Go ahead, Chris. So the upper level is a proposed conversion of the existing art instruction space into the top floor of the new library. In order to have Americans with disabilities access from the top part to the lower-level storage area, we add a lift and then a stairwell on the outside wall. So this could be a really dynamic two-story space. Next slide. You'll see that there are a couple of options here. The old, the existing storage space or the old rasp space could be a maker's space, it could be a lower-level instructional space for the library. In this option, we have an office. Now, go ahead, Chris. And then, and then another opportunity for reading, and that came from the list that the students gave us. This new space would be about 200 square feet bigger than the library that we have today, so almost 1,600 square feet. And again, what's, what the kind of the game changer is adding space to the inventory of instructional opportunities in the school without having to put an addition up. So that's kind of a, kind of a big deal, and we think worthy of investment. So these are some precedent images of what a two-story learning commons could look like. Again, just trying to get everyone's, in your minds' eye, what it would be like, not that it would be literally like this, but the stairs is a really wonderful opportunity for learning, for collaboration, for community building. There can be bookshelves built in along the lower level of the stair, niches built in case work, and again, different seating opportunities that are age-appropriate for third and fourth grade. And so if we relocate the library, the logical question is how would we repurpose the existing library space? And one of the solutions that we're thinking about is to relocate the art room to the left side of the plan. There's a nice existing space or office space that could be converted for the kiln, and then we have the exit to the left. So this total space is about 800 square feet, and then we also have a need at Highview to have a sensory room, and that could be created on the right side of the existing library space. We propose a demountable wall and accordion door, so we have optimum flexibility in the area. And, yeah, so these, these projects combined are an opportunity to really reimagine both library and add the additional space to the program. I want to say that's our last slide. And so just a little bit about schedule before I turn over for questions. If we can decide together which project we want to move forward with, we start drawing next month, in May, we have time to get those plans to the State Education Department, receive our permit at the end of 2025, and then bid and be able to start construction next summer. So if we, and then sort of that window starts to close the later in the spring that we get, and we're looking more at 2027 for the next cycle of construction.
Questions, specific questions for?
Well, I just want to, I just want to say that today we visited Highview School, and here you showed two options, but today we talked about other options and combinations therein. So I think it was very helpful to go and see the space exactly. We're looking at the best for the kids, and yet the most, you know, economically, you know, possible that we can have in this, at this point in our district. So, you know, we're going to be talking about all these options, and, but thank you for, you know, doing all of this, and we'll have to spend the next couple, because we're going to have to make that decision in May.
Right, if we want to do it by next year, we have to make a decision.
And this can be done in phases, right? This isn't, we don't have to do, I know we talked about the economy of scale, and, you know, edibles and all that, but to some extent, this can be done in phases. We wouldn't have to do all this work at once.
Well, we want to make sure that when we reopen school, we have an art classroom and a library. So it's a little bit...
Well, but it wouldn't be for this, anyway. We're talking a year from now.
Yes.
2026.
I think the point that, that's important, there are many points, obviously, that are important, is that Highview is a beautiful historic building, and we love it, right? It's a gem in our community. Some of the limitations, though, is that it is a historic 100-year-old building. And so with what we know, that students need to be able to do what they want to do today, we talk a lot about innovation and teachers being able to engage in innovative practices with children, with kids, it's hard to do in those kinds of very traditional spaces. So I think what we have in front of us is an opportunity to create some innovative spaces in an existing historic building that we love, but where children may not have those kinds of opportunities in the existing space. So regardless of what we choose, that's our goal, right, is we want to be able to provide those for our third and fourth grade kids. The idea of grabbing the rasp room and being able to repurpose it for instructional use is a huge, a huge perk for us, because right now, if you go down there where we were today, you know, it's, it's storage area, but that, there's a lot of space down there, and it seems a shame, right, that we wouldn't capture this, this chance to grab that space, it's already in our building, and really do something with it that is good for kids, right? And also good for teachers in giving them a place they could go with students, where they could leave their classrooms and go. I think the idea of a space that's contiguous to the outdoor space really allows us a chance to use that space fully. There's a lot of research, and most of you, you know, know of that, about kids being outside, learning outside, and the importance of nature and being able to be in, in those greener spaces. So it would allow, where we to choose, an option where the library is on that side of the building, or even if we just choose to repurpose the space, the rasp space underneath, it allows us to really be able to capture that property that we've already purchased at Highview. So I think it's exciting. We're not there yet by any stretch of the imagination in terms of what we are still processing through, but I, Armand, thank you for, you've done a lot of ideations for us. I think we had a lot of great conversation today in that walk of the building, and I don't know about anybody else, but it really helped me to wrap my head around what we're talking about, and also have a clearer idea of what those spaces might actually look like, you know, regardless of which direction we choose to go.
And also, whichever option we choose, the taxpayers should know it's a, no, no increase in taxes for the taxpayers. It's part of our whole, you know, long five, six-year project that we've started with the bond, so, you know, I think taxpayers should know that. So whichever option we choose, it will not make a difference in the taxes.
Because of the 1.5 we set aside and the money that was swept over from the...
Right. We're under budget.
From the under budget of the phases.
Right.
So for the drawing so far, the first set that we spoke about when we initially went over this had a bump out. Then we came to this conclusion, this drawing here, because of the cost, you know, we saw the cost, and, yeah, it was gorgeous and beautiful, but cost-wise, we came to this now. One of the things that we came to the conclusion today is that, yes, the basement needs to be built, we need to do something with that space. So I think that is, we pretty much are all in agreement with, that that is 100% like it has to happen, because it's wasted space. The concept of tying it to the outside somehow, where we have that ability for the kids to come from that space downstairs outside, I think we're all pretty much in agreement about. I, I just am a little bit, you know, still up in the air about, is the concept of moving the entire library, I, from what I'm understanding, it would be an extra 266 square feet if we moved it from that side to this side, and it would be divided by two floors. And so then it goes, well, if you need more space, then bump it out, but then there's that cost, right, of, like you said, putting the stairs that would join the top and the bottom floors outside. So it's, it's a bit of a difficult decision, because, I mean, it's, it's one, cost, but two, you know, is it really that effective to put the library on the other side? Now, I know Ray had mentioned, does it really matter if we put the library here or the art center here, and then still use the bottom as a technology or maker's space?
Maker's space.
Technology room, when I went to school.
Innovation lab.
It was a technology room.
Innovative, innovation.
And, you know, put that still downstairs, and then upstairs still have the art room, does it really, at this stage of planning, does it matter what is there for 266 extra square feet? That's just where I'm at, like, it's, it's kind of difficult to, you know, is that worth that? I mean, I like the concept of that sensory room. I know Merritt had mentioned, you know, the need for that, an extra space, an extra room, which is nice. I guess I, maybe if we could see, since the lift now is no longer an elevator, but it's a lift, if there would be any way to expand the footprint without jacking up the price so much, I don't, I don't know. I know that's just a pipe dream, but I guess Matt would say, as long as you want to pay for it, right? But, you know, it's, it's like not 100% perfect for me, because it's, I don't know, I feel like there's, it's still not, I don't know.
Well, I think this is work in progress, right?
That's why I need to, yeah, that's why there's no conclusions.
I think the thing, like today's trip for me opened my eyes to how much work needs to be done there, irrespective of if we were to do anything different, right? The both spaces have, like, water infiltration, there needs to be work that needs to be done to the plaster, and that needs to be repaired, the ceiling stuff, the light, like, there's a considerable amount of work that needs to be done in the two, what's that, what we're calling second-floor spaces, right? And then that, that basement space is kind of like, you said, creepy, right? Like, it's like, it's not usable space right now, it's not habitable for kids, it's not student-friendly, and to grab a hold of those spaces and make them instructional spaces and not get anything new is a considerable investment by itself. So I think the opportunity now, having that second, that outdoor area, we have an opportunity to tie it to the outside world, right, where, where teachers and kids can, can have a little different experience. So I think the question is, how far do we want to go with that, and what, what's the utility moving forward, right? And I don't have an answer to that. I just know that a lot of this cost is to repair what we have, right, and make it usable for kids, right? And just, you know? So then it's how much more are we willing to spend for added utility, excitement, and something that we're going to enjoy for hopefully 25 to 50 years for kids, right? 'Cause we can't go, we can't get a building that is that much bigger than the existing footprint, right? We might be able to bump out a little bit, but not much. So I think that's the answer. We have to come up with in a short period of time. And hopefully we can get a good compromise on that so we're not spending a lot of money to get it done. But it's gonna cost, you know, a lot of money just to fix what we have. So the added investment to get a little more excitement for kids really isn't the bulk of this cost.
So are you saying, are you thinking the concept of doing the fix up both floors? Obviously, we've kind of agreed with the basement has to be, you know, something has to be done down there. And because it's so secluded, right, you have to like go down that staircase down here. In order to make that more friendly of a space, right? You then connect it to the space upstairs via staircase. So you have a staircase from here and then the windows, right? So then you would put, you know, massive windows, which is great as well. Are you thinking that you would like to see the bump out?
I, I, I don't know what, like, so I'm not living in one place or another yet. I think for me, it's a little early. I, I think that what I've, what I've come to understand is a lot of the cost is just to make it suitable for kids.
And bring it to code.
And bring it to code and usable and clean it up, right? There's considerable plaster damage, right, water infiltration. And, you know, just to, just to get the light, just to make that room nice with the full, utilize the full windows that are existing there, right? Get rid of the drop ceiling. Just, we've got, we've gotta figure out what to do with all the wires and everything and the HVAC that's sticking out downstairs. Like, that stuff is gonna be the bulk, in my opinion, or what I, what I figured out, like what we've kind of talked about today, it's gonna be a big cost, right? So making it shiny and new and whether we move one, the library to one side or, or we keep it where it is, I don't think that's where the, the cost is, right? So I think we, we're looking to do like, you know, buy once, cry once. You know, like, let's do, let's do it right, whatever it is, whatever we decide, and let's be as responsible as we can. But even though it's not gonna cost the taxpayers anything more, right? We don't wanna be frivolous with the expenditure. But the bulk of the cost is just making the space good for kids, like. And I, I, I think that's something I didn't really realize until today when we walked through those spaces. Because it's an older building and it's, you know, it's, we're retrofitting a lot of the technology that would be expected in any classroom that's built today.
So you're saying though
It's an old building.
Sorry, I'm not gonna joke.
Yeah, no, no.
But you're, you're saying, you know, regardless of whether that space down there becomes a library or a maker space, or it, that will be the bulk of the renovation, right? I mean, that's basically, so that's why we, I think we're
Well, the other goal would be the square footage, right? Because like it's small. So we're doing a lot of this work. We're gonna gain the downstairs.
Yes, but it will, it will either be part of a library if we choose to do it as a library or it will be a maker space, which it will have its own, you know, it will still be utilized for
Or a maker space or an elevator.
Whatever the innovation is called.
It's called. But it's, the space is still that small space, so
But we have to be ADA compliant. We have to be able to get kids there and get kids there.
Yeah, we have to have the lift, right? So the lift, but the lift is not a full elevator, which is a reduced cost. But then the, the concept of, you know, when we put the, the elevator on the outside of the high school, it was a million dollars.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, do, obviously we don't need to do all of that if we can get away with a lift as opposed to a full elevator. But I, I'm just, it, you know, like we kind of come halfway to conclude that downstairs has to be done. It has to connect to the outside. It has to have some sort of, you know, connection to each other.
Access, yeah.
But then the question is, does the square footage need to improve? 'Cause when you look at it, it's, you know, you're, like when Merritt was saying last week, you, a class and a half has to be able to get in there. Does a class and a half now get into that art room where the old?
That, I think that's a great question. I think, I think when we start talking, right, we gotta talk a lot between now and the next two meetings or whatever, it's how much utility do we get for how much money, right? Like, is it worth, is it worth the amount that we're gonna spend to get an extra half a class in there sometimes? Is that the real use that, is that the, the actual use that's going to happen, right? Like, I think those are questions that we have to pause and round.
Well, I mean, it sounds like, I mean, Matt came up with great ideas today of stuff that he saw at other school districts and concepts of, you know, I mean, if, let's say you, in that space, he spoke today of, of a green screen, right? He spoke of, you know, different types of, you know, children's, you know, productions that they would do and things like that. You know, I mean, that room downstairs is only, you know, so that's only, my conundrum is like
I think when you take out all of those walls, that's not that small.
Thank you. I think it's
I don't know.
I mean, I think since we just did walks through earlier
Right, I mean, it's early.
and we just are reviewing and really processing everything, I think we're going to really have to, I think we have to do some thinking on our own and, on our own
Yeah.
and then come back and, and do a lot of talking before the twenty ninth, which is our next meeting.
Yeah.
But the downstairs is only six hundred and sixty three square feet. If, that's with the lift and a small office, which you could, I guess, do away with that office. But I mean, if you then look at the library the way it is now and, 'cause the upstairs, right, would be a maker space or vice versa, right? The library that we have now is eleven hundred square feet.
Well, that's what we have on.
You see what I'm saying? So like we're putting
There's a lot of processing to do and, yeah.
So we're gonna have to circle back. And I mean, I know there's a vacation in between and, you know, but I guess if there's any updates of any kind, we can get things via email. Like, if you have any updates, Armon, if you make any, you know, with our conversation today with some of the ideas, if there's any more information that you can get for us, you know, we can look it over even during, between now and the twenty ninth and then maybe have another meeting.
It's a big step forward to commit, tentatively commit to improving the space downstairs. And that, you know, that opens up a number of opportunities. And I think you've given us enough guidance and information that we can report back with. At least one more option and maybe two. We'll see, we'll see how, but it's, but it's really about how we put those puzzle pieces together and how they make the best opportunity, you know, in terms of the reinvestment in the school.
I mean, for me, I think, like, one, just one last thing, and I'm sorry for talking so much. But it would be really interesting to know how it might be used. Like, if there's another conversation with teachers and the principal on, like, how they would anticipate using those spaces and what things are like, the things they would need. Like, like the things that on prioritized list of the things that they would want in those, like those spaces and why they would want it one way over another. I think that's, that's important to know too, right? We're not the teachers who are teaching in those spaces. Or the principal who has to inspire teachers to use those spaces differently. Because they will be different spaces now, right? They'll be improved spaces. What's gonna go into those spaces? You know, if we know that there's a piece of equipment or there's a kiln that's a certain size, right? And we create a room that's too small for it to be held, that would be kind of silly, right? So I think we need to know those things in advance and to help us to make decisions. Like, and we, I guess we need to know them yesterday, right? But I think that would be really important for me before I could vote for one choice or another, is how it's going to be used. And then we can weigh what we're willing to spend now or what we think is worth it.
And we can also do this in phases, right? Say we decide.
Yeah, I, so, yeah, so, you know, Armon, if you could tell us like what makes the most sense as far as phased, what should happen first, what should happen second? And if there's any benefits to one of the economies of scale of doing in a specific order, I think that would be really good if we did, if we, if we could do things in phases. And, and it might make sense to do some things over others first.
Yeah.
If you, if you had recommendations for that, I think that would be helpful.
And also as far as adable, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Like to do the library first and, and then next year do the bottom part. I mean, just not all at once, is what I'm saying, yeah. All right, we, obviously
Obviously, we'd have to have an overall view of what we want, whether we're moving things or not.
Right. I mean, that would have to make a decision on.
Right, but the stuff that, you know, Ray is talking about, noting specifically what utilization of that room is not where we are, we're not there yet, I don't think.
I think we have to
Well, I think we need the suggestions from the staff.
That's my point.
About, you know, what they think would be, you know, a good use of the space.
Okay, any, anything else?
Things to work out.
No, thank, thank you.
Okay, so, Armon, you will, I'm sure you will be giving us more information.
Absolutely.
So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for meeting us early.
Yes, thank you.
Anytime with us is everything.
That was, yeah, that was important. Thank you. Okay, we have a few more pieces of business to get through. 'Cause I know it's getting late, so let's, we'll try and get through. There's no unfinished business, right?
Well, we have plenty of unfinished
Well, we have plenty, well, no unfinished business we need to discuss tonight. We will move on to unfinished business the next meeting. Um, Rockland County School Boards, we're gonna keep this very brief. I mean, I, I feel, you know, when we get updates from LHC, whatever, it's the same advocacy items and, and everything, regional cost index, not much to talk about EV buses, I guess that's still on hold. But basically, we have a few things coming up now in the, in the spring. We have our, June second is gonna be our annual meeting and dinner where we're honoring the SROs and student leaders. So I, I know we have to get a student leader, Mike from the high school, right? To be invited there. I'm sure you're working
I haven't selected.
You have one? Okay, wonderful.
I didn't select that.
Okay, great. And then our SROs, we should be in the process of inviting them as well.
One of them, one of them, they'll pay for it.
They pay for one, we pay, right. I mean, we only have two, so we would like for both of them to be there if possible.
But we'd also need the parents of the child.
Yes, both parents will be there.
Well, they do, they do pay for the student and the parents. If there's another student, then we pay for that as a district. But the, yeah, Rockland County School Boards will cover that. And our next meeting is Monday, May fifth. But tomorrow night, we actually, I think several of us are going to the Bosse Services Dinner, which is always a really nice event where the hospitality students create a wonderful meal and delicious desserts for us. They do such a great job and they work so hard. So I think some of us are going to that. We're looking forward to that. Is there anything else from Rockland County School Boards that you wanna mention? Anyone else that was on? Okay, all right, how about New York State or Nationals or anything new?
I just looked at my thing to see if they had, had a budget they don't, at New York State. But tomorrow, tomorrow evening is when the expires, the extension they gave already. So if they don't make a decision tomorrow, they have to, you know, have another vote on extending it, you know, further. I'm not quite sure what's holding them up. I think there's a couple of little things and I think it's mostly the city versus the rest of the world. But we'll, but we'll see what happens with, with that. As far as the, the national, I was just at the national convention, so we had a number of conversations about, you know, advocacy and where, where education funding is gonna be. And it's still the same as I talked about last time. We don't know what they're gonna do with the IDA or the title funds or how they're gonna, if they're gonna give them, how they're gonna give them, or so. We really don't know. I mean, as far as their future budgets that have been kind of presented by the House was not very helpful to education. I wanna tell all those parents out there, especially kids, please write to your congressman and your senators and tell them how important it is to fund children who have disabilities. Because the more they hear from you and the more noise that they hear in their office and the more they hear that people are calling about it, the more they'll pay attention to that. Because if people don't do that, they just figure, I'm not hearing from anybody. So nobody, I guess, is upset about it. So please, everybody that's out there listening, if you have a child or even if you don't have a child with disability, but realize the importance that we educate every child, please call, call your congressman and, and your con, and your both, both of our senators.
So, and from being at National, do you have anything maybe at the next meeting that you would like to, to share with us?
I will. I'll report back at the next meeting. Yeah, I will, I will. 'Cause there were some very, very good speakers.
Right, some of the workshops you went to and speakers.
I don't really get to a lot of workshops 'cause they have me working.
But you're no longer president of
Except, well, past presidents work when we go to conventions.
Okay.
We fill in for, you know, we're staff.
I'm sure you picked up some good information, so, all right. So then maybe at the next meeting, we can put that on the agenda for Ann to, to speak a little bit. All right, thank you. All right, local government, anything you wanna share with civic?
Yeah, we went to the civic meeting on, last week.
It was Thursday.
And George came.
George Holman?
Yeah. George Holman came and spoke about, you know, a lot of the development that's coming down our, our way. So the Chase Building is done, is going to be taken down.
A lot of development, yeah. It's gotta be the beginning.
Senior housing will be there and that is something that I guess was a deal with the county and the property had nothing to do with the town and the zoning fits it, so they can do it. The next is the TOD. It sounds like that is imminently kind of changing hands, which is good for the, for the property to be cleaned up because it does look a bit, you know, trashy with all of that stuff back there. And the town said that they're gonna hold their feet to the fire in regards to the junk that's back there, which is good. But then housing, and then the housing proposed potentially at the Sears, the old Sears location and then obviously Grace Baptist. So we did talk. He said he's gonna have a meeting with the neighbors in that area of Grace Baptist on the twenty fourth.
April twenty fourth.
And, you know, to talk about that concept, you know, we did say as citizens, not as a, a board, I did say that, you know, it's a lot of development and we're concerned also for the school population. So we are looking into that, you know, how those various different buildings would then impact the total school population. And in addition to as a citizen, the development, the traffic. So, you know, I can just say it every week, you know, I encourage everybody to get out and get to the meetings, the town hall meetings, the civic meetings because your voices are heard when people speak up.
Well, just call the town office and register your concern. You know, everybody is bound for a phone call, right? I mean, as far as the Grace Baptist Church, that's about a three acre parcel. They're talking about putting seventy four units in that piece, which to me sounds crazy, but, you know, we had talked so often about not having high density construction in that area. Apparently it didn't really, the message has not sunk in. I appreciate George Holman for coming to that meeting because he righted some of the inaccuracies that were spouted by another individual at the previous meeting.
About us.
About us and, and about what's going on in the community. So I appreciated that very much. But when you listen to Mr. Holman's presentation, he talked about the building of, on Middletown Road for the old Chase Bank. And that's gonna be senior
Fifty five and over.
Fifty five and over. He talked about the, the TOD of the, by the train station, hopefully starting. Who knows with our economy, what's gonna happen there now? But that last parcel that they had been waiting to sell finally sold. He talked about building apartments or whatever at the, as Stephanie mentioned, at the old Sears building. And then we talked about the Grace Baptist Church. And then we talked about the Chick-fil-A coming in, the Popeyes coming in. There is possibly going to be a higher end restaurant coming into the Marshalls, the old Marshalls area back in there. I don't know when or if that, I don't think that deal is even finished. And after he talked about all these things that are happening in Nanuet and all the, you know, all these ratables, then he talked about the turf fields, the mini turf fields that are going in in New City and West Nyack and a memorial park going in someplace, I think in West Nyack. And there was another park going on in someplace else, not in Nanuet. So, you know, Nanuet is really being, in my opinion, somewhat overdeveloped.
With high density.
High density stuff.
Seventy four, seventy five, between sixty, he did say between sixty and seventy five units at the Grace Baptist Church. But that's high density. I don't mean that's, that's about as dense as you get. And about a hundred units by the mall and another hundred units by the T D.
Oh, no, what about that? We're talking about, they were initially
No, they, 'cause they had
They were talking about a lot of units.
Wait, but they have, they had, they just, from what he was saying, remember that they had it back off because there's wetlands? Did you hear about that? There was like, there's like wetlands back there. There's a stream and they had to
You're still talking about a lot of units in there, Stephanie, but anyway.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
My point is, is that, you know, a lot of stuff is happening and a phone call.
Stay, stay informed.
Too much density, too much density.
Too many people.
With the most dense in the whole county with the most dense.
The only, the only control as a board, I would say, right, that we have is if they come to us with any pilots and or agreements about real, uh, school taxes, I'd be correct.
Right, I mean, right.
Well, but as just citizens, we have some void to go.
We could deny them.
That meeting is on April 24th for the, the immediate neighbors.
Those are for the citizens, for the community members.
But I don't think they'll keep anybody out, I mean. That's it.
Okay, so District Clerk, we have some business to attend to.
Couple things. I'll be quick.
Yes.
No problem. The first is the appointment of Board President as Chairperson of Annual Meeting on May 20th, 2025. Resolve that the President of the Board of Education be appointed Chairperson of the Annual Meeting, which is, which is being held Tuesday, May 20th, 2025 for the purpose of voting on the Nanyut School District Budget, the Nanyut Public Library Budget and the election of School Board Members and Library Trustees.
Okay.
So moved.
And moved by Ann, seconded by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I will be there. All right, voter.
Approval of voter registration resolution. The time and location of voter registration is set by School Board Resolution. Therefore, resolve that voter registration for the purpose of voting on the school but district budget, library budget, School District Board of Education and Library Board of Trustees be held not less than five days before the budget vote. Eligible residents can register with the District Clerk and the Administration offices during regular office hours until May 15th, 2025. In-person registration is required along with photo identification and proof of residence. Appointments are recommended.
Can I have a motion, please? Moved by Lynn, seconded by Ray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All righty, next.
Appointment, approval of appointment of registrars, election inspectors and or poll clerks. Resolve that the following persons be appointed as registrars, election inspectors and or, and or poll clerks for voting and registration for school and library budgets and Board of Trustee members on May 20th, 2025. Patricia Dudak, Stan Danzer, Linda Newman, Eileen O'Connell, Eileen Scott, Calvin Mendelson, Bruce Simon, who's the machine custodian. And be further resolved that the rate of pay will be $18 per hour, $2.75 per day for the machine custodian. The Board authorizes the clerk of the board to make changes to the list as needed.
So moved.
Okay, okay, moved by Ann, seconded by Ray. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the last one, appointment of poll clerks for affidavits.
Last one, please. Approval of appointment of poll clerks for affidavits. According to Chapter 474 of the New York State Education Law, persons claiming that they are registered voters, even though their name does not appear on school registration list or the voter registration list furnished by the Rockland County Board of Elections may certify that they are registered voters by completing an affidavit. Poll clerks must be appointed to canvas and cast these affidavits. Resolve that Patricia Dudak and Eileen Scott be designated as poll clerks to cast and canvas ballots under the provisions of Chapter 474 of the New York State Education Law.
So moved.
Motion? Stephanie, seconded by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, you're moving right along. Does anyone have anything that they would like to address the board about? Other than please adjourn. Adjourn means, okay, moved by Lynn, second. Seconded by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, good night, everyone. Thank you so much for hanging in there with us and thank you for your presentations again.